One, we are all here. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and of course, I would like to remind counsel that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer my, any questions you have. The first item is a discussion review of the proposed city code amendments and an update on human resources policy changes to ensure compliance with the Arizona Proposition 207. Assistant City Attorney Lisa, or Liza, Lisa Maxi-Molins. Lisa?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I am here this evening to discuss proposed changes to the city code, specifically changes related to the enactment of Prop 207, also known as the Arizona Smart and Safe Act, specifically regulating marijuana. Tonight, I will provide an overview of the Smart and Safe Act, Prop 207. I will also present proposed city code amendments related to Prop 207, and also, we will update counsel on human resource policy changes that potentially are needed due to the enactment of the law. As you know, on November the 3rd, 2020, Arizona voters approved Prop 207, and that law was signed into law by the governor on November 30th, 2020. Prop 207 authorized the legal sale, possession, and use of non medicinal marijuana by adults 21 years or older. Adults can possess and have in their possession a certain amounts of marijuana, specifically one ounce of marijuana, they can have five grams of marijuana concentrate, and they can have up to six marijuana plants. Prop 207 authorized the Arizona Department of Health and Human Services as the agency which would regulate marijuana use in the state of Arizona. Specifically, the DHS will establish rules, issue licenses to marijuana establishments, and when I say marijuana establishments, I'm referring to retail sale facilities, cultivation, and manufacturing and processing facilities. Prop 207 set forth strict timelines in which DHS has to establish rules and issue licenses. We expect licenses to be issued within the first quarter of 2021, and they also have up until July to issue rules. Also, the law allows for delivery in 2023. DHS will also implement rules and regulations concerning delivery. So after the change in the law, city staff, we got together and we reviewed the law and discussed what proposed changes we needed. Staff included the city attorney's office, the police department, the fire department, code enforcement, building code, and also Public Works. And we had two main goals, first of all, to resolve any conflicts between Prop 207 and the existing city code. We also wanted to have, provide clarification, meaning we wanted clear and concise amendments which made it clear to citizens so they can adhere and ensure compliance within the city of Goodyear. Also, staff had another underlying concern that we had is also the enactment. We understand that license will be issued in the first quarter of 2021. We wanted to make sure that we included code amendments prior to licensing be issued and the sale of, retail sale of marijuana in the city. We understand, this is a new law. In our discussions, we understand that we will have to be on alert and look for if, after public use and sale has started, are there any additional changes that need to be made? And if so, we will bring those back to counsel for review and consideration. So, we added 11-1-38. It's a specific section in our Chapter 11 offenses that deals with the regulation of marijuana. We added definitions specifically related to marijuana and marijuana-related products, including establishment, open spaces, and public places. We also wanted to ensure that the smoking of marijuana is treated the same as the smoking of tobacco. As you recall, in 2019, September, that council enacted specific provisions concerning vaping and vape pens, so we included in our definitions of smoke and smoking and smoking devices, those specific provisions in talking about vaping and vape pen. So those were covered, too. The next section is subsection C, which deals with the prohibition of use and possession on city-owned or controlled property that is strictly prohibited in our proposed amendments. We also included prohibitions of use and possession in public places and open spaces. Public places are those areas in which people are invited into and permitted to be. Those spaces include movie theaters, banks, restaurants. Those are places which use and possession are prohibited. There's also open spaces which would include public sidewalks and public walkways. Those marijuana use and possession is also prohibited in those spaces. Again, we included city and parks and city trails. This is similar to the language that council enacted in 2019. We wanted to mirror that language and make sure, again, that marijuana vaping and smoking is also prohibited in those areas in the city of Goodyear. Next, we'll deal with the persons who could engage in the retail sale of marijuana. Subsection F prohibits non licensed persons and entities from engaging in the retail sale of marijuana. Prop 207 makes that clear that that's not allowed, only licensed facilities can engage in this. Also, the city council approved most recently zoning code amendments which, where you only allow dual licensees in the city of Goodyear, meaning those entities that have both a medical marijuana license to sell and also a recreational license to sell. Subsection H prohibits the delivery of marijuana. As I said earlier, Prop 207 does not allow delivery until 2023 at the earliest. This provision was enacted to ensure that delivery would not take place in the city prior to 2023. Subsection I deals with the transfer of marijuana. Under the law, a 21-year-old can transfer marijuana to another person of age. They can't sell, but they can transfer. Prop 207 has language that deals with the advertisement and public promotion of the transfer. It appears the intent of that provision is to ensure that if someone's going to engage in the transfer, that they're not advertising it and putting it out in the public. We can see where that could potentially be a potential safety risk or issue if there's a large crowd or if someone tries to attack that person. The next subsection deals with the regulation of personal use at the personal residence. As stated earlier, a person can cultivate marijuana at their house and also process and manufacture marijuana. There are two prohibitions related to this particular use, and that is that if you're going to cultivate, it should be an enclosed area, and it should also be securely locked. This is primarily to prevent access by underage users. We also included a section that prohibits the chemical extraction of marijuana. This is where you convert a marijuana plant to a marijuana concentrate. What we've seen in other cities is that this, using chemicals for this process can result in explosions, so it is specifically prohibited. In our discussion with code enforcement, one of the concerns that often comes up is you've issued a citation to a tenant at a house, and you continue to issue citations. And ultimately, how do you reach out to the landlord? We included a section here that would allow us to reach out to the landlord and potentially cite the landlord if he's specifically allowing chemical extraction on the property. Also in this subsection, we prohibit the, we limit the disposal of marijuana and marijuana product waste. Specifically, it can't be placed in an unsecured waste or trash can. This is consistent with council's prior action concerning medicinal marijuana. When that was enacted by city council, it was considered a hazardous waste, and byproducts had to be disposed in the same way you would dispose of hazardous waste. In researching this in other cities, what generally happens is unused marijuana is generally used for compost, for additional growth, or the user will take it back to the retailer for proper disposition and disposal. Of these city code sections, section, subsection C, the use and possession of marijuana on city-owned property is a Class 1 misdemeanor. All the other violations in this subsection will, are petty offenses. This is consistent with Prop 207, and Prop 207, most of the violations are petty offenses, except for underage uses. As I discussed earlier, we also changed the definition in 10-1-1 to not only include medical marijuana as a hazardous waste, but marijuana generally as a hazardous waste to ensure proper disposal. And now, we'll move on to the human resource policies and what's, there's questions at this point.
Can we take a break from this one? All right. Yes, Brennan?
I've got a question on the, you said possession, so if someone is in the city park and they have it on them, then we could, I guess more for the police department, but they could be cited for having it on them. They're not smoking it, they just have it on them. I'm sure you have to like have a reason to go search them, essentially, but I'm just curious what that would look like.
True, yes, there has to be a reason to have the, essentially, and if you look at that section, we also deal with the issue of displaying. My understanding is the intent of council is to have people utilize marijuana at home and not be at city parks utilizing it or displaying it or transferring it. Again, I think it comes to those same, same concerns we have about the safety concerns that might be related to this, and yes, essentially, you would have to have someone say, "I saw this," or some additional information. There would not be a reason to search anyone.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I was just curious, and then if there was a crime that occurred and the person happened to have it on them, it would just be a petty type of offense, addition to whatever the original, the number one crime was. And then, you said the delivery, so can our facility that we have in Goodyear transfer to another facility, another city, essentially?
Yes, there can be transfer between establishments, but there can't be delivery to users or potential buyers at this point, under the law.
Okay, there's, thank you for the clarification. So no Uber marijuana Uber?
Breeds.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sherri?
Thank you for all this information, because this is kind of a new area. With regard to the, the youth, if someone, like we have this problem with the vaping, someone buying it for younger kids, that's a Class 1 misdemeanor, right? Or is that, where does that fall?
No, we did not include that in our city code amendments. There are specific sections in the, the general Prop 207 that specifically, specifically goes through and deals with assisting underage users and underage users. And those also are petty offenses, but can be graduated to a misdemeanor.
Okay, so then it could be similar, it's similar kind of like to our vaping, that if you continues to do it, it can raise up, then?
Yes, in, in under Prop 207, yes.
Okay. And then the other question is, you talked about the landlords. Can a private property owner, if I own a house and I'm renting it out, or a landowner or multi-housing authorities, can they ban this in their units under Prop 207, or are they not allowed to?
Ban chemical extraction, yes.
The whole growing thing, if you wanted to, or?
I don't think that's possible under the law.
Okay, we might want, I don't know if we're going to plan an outreach to our apartment owners and everything, kind of let them know what they can and can't do if they see the garbage, or if they see, like you said, the chemical extraction, so they can be very specific then. Thank you, great, great, you did a lot of work on this, thank you.
Bill?
Yes, Lisa, thank you very much. I sent questions last week, and I, I do want to reiterate both of them from something slightly different. Let's talk about delivery first. Prop 207 does not allow delivery of recreational marijuana until 2023, and potentially 25, you said. But the current use of medical marijuana is not prohibited from delivery today, is that correct?
I don't think there's any language specifically talking about medicinal marijuana being delivered, so I can look into that, but it's my understanding it doesn't exist, but I can confirm that for you.
I, yeah, obviously, from a legal standpoint, I know that it exists, that, that if you were to go to a dispensary or make a phone call, you could get a delivery to your home. If we enact this, we're basically telling all of our medical users, you can't get home delivery anymore. And I have a, I have a concern with that. We've been silent on it to date. If Prop 207 says when it can and can't be delivered, I don't know that it's necessary for us to go that, to go that, that farther, that one step farther if it's already in the law. I'm concerned that we're going to say to people, "Don't get, you can't get your home delivery," if they're needing it from a medical perspective. I think we have to be very sensitive to that. We certainly aren't limiting, limiting the delivery of any other, for lack of a better phrase, recreational substance, alcohol, tobacco, et cetera. We don't limit that, so I would really hate for us to call out a single industry or a single medical provider on that, on that note. And then, my second question is regarding the classification of marijuana as a hazardous waste, and that was the question that I posed last week. Marijuana itself is a naturally grown substance, it's a plant, and then its extracts turn into either flour, or an edible, or some other form of, of ingestion. Why would we treat this as a hazardous waste when we don't treat other things that are clearly hazardous as such? And I use the example of Styrofoam, we don't prohibit Styrofoam from, from being thrown in the regular trash. And that, again, calling out a specific industry, if somebody has purchased the product and then just decides to throw it in their garbage can and put it in the bag, they're basically in violation of city code. And I'm, again, concerned about the double standard with that. So can we talk about the classification as a hazardous waste? Because that falls in the same as acid, or paint, you know, lead-based paint, or, I mean, it's, Household Hazardous Waste Day is going to have to include a marijuana barrel, you know, so I'm just, help me through that, because that's a different take on this.
Well, as I said, this was similar to the provision that was enacted for medical marijuana, where it was considered hazardous waste also. So, I mean, if council's open to change, and I could take that back to Public Works, and we can talk about the concerns that were raised here at the council meeting, if we're going to make an overall change to treat both recreational and medical marijuana to allow the disposal. The other issue is Prop 207 clearly indicates that they don't want underage users to have access to marijuana at all. If you're cultivating marijuana at your house, it has to be in an enclosed area and in a locked and secure box. So with that, that's also another issue we considered along with council's prior intent concerning the disposal of marijuana products.
I think if we look back, when medical marijuana first came out, there was so much that was not known about it, as opposed to, here we are 10 years later, I think there's a lot more known. I mean, I am sitting here talking about marijuana in a much different perspective than I ever would have 10 years ago, because of the amount of education and the materials that are out there for you to become educated on it. So I, I would encourage us to perhaps look at that, because I would hate for this, this to be considered in the same regard as drain cleaner, or battery acid. I mean, it, that just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I think the likelihood of someone, you know, throwing it away is probably very nil. Taking a plant that they once grew and pull it out of the ground and pitch that, I think that's a greater likelihood. But I don't, I don't think we're going to see children going through garbage to pull it out, so why risk putting our, one of our residents in harms, from a legal perspective in harms way, when there's really no, no hazard to it? If I'm a, if I'm an insulin-taking diabetic, I can take all of my syringes and throw them in a plastic milk jug and throw them in my garbage can, but I can't throw leftover marijuana away. I'm just struggling with that, so I just defer to everyone else.
Sherri?
I, I think those are really interesting points. The first one, what I kind of see the distinction is for the medical, for the Uber medical eat, is that when you have the medical card, you have already gone through the doctor, you've been vetted, your age, so obviously, we don't want to change that. I agree, I think, and that we, there's a paper trail to make sure that the person getting it, you know, Wally eats her medical marijuana, she's already applied for the card through DHS, her information's there, so she's good. We want to make sure that, you know, somebody's child doesn't get that. I know for different alcohol, different deliveries of wine, or Safeway, you actually have to show your ID. So I think that's probably why the difference and why the delay, they have to come up with some sort of way, hopefully, I think that's the idea by 2023. So I'm okay keeping those separate, because I think that's the ID issue, is to make sure the kids don't get it. The other one is also really well thought out. When you were saying that, I was thinking, we were up in Canada a couple of years ago, we had to take our dog to the vet, because we let it run around. And they said after Canada made marijuana legal, people would throw it down, dogs would get in it, our dog was like really lethargic, they had to test it to see if our dog had overdosed on marijuana. So I think, and I, I know just from some of the drug cases I've done, there's different parts of the plant, it's not all, and there, you know, if it's, what hyper, what is it, hyper, where they grow it in the water, hydroponic pot, I mean, there's, there's different ways they grow, and there's different chemicals they use. So I think that's a really good area to look into, to make sure it's not all that natural, unfortunately. And, and there's parts in the stems and the other parts that they don't use, and there's the male plant, and the female plant, I mean, it's, so I think that's a really good thing to look into, and I agree with Bill that that's something we want to look into. We don't want people throwing it away, but is it drain cleaner, or is it, how can we keep everyone safe, pets, children, safe? So I think those are really good ideas to kind of, if we could get more information. I don't know if we need to change anything at this point, but I think if we see what comes up, that might be something to, we can amend this if, as we learn more about this, right? Yeah, because I think those are very good points that Bill brought up.
Does anybody want to speak, Bill, if there's something else?
No, I'm not.
All right, go ahead.
Well, it's interesting, as you dive into it, all the, the different particulars, and, you know, the, I guess the, the flip side of not letting people throw it away or dispose of it is that it stays in the house and then becomes an issue, too. So, you know, every, every, you know, it's that law of unintended consequences, but I, you know, I don't know if we need a marijuana drop box or something like you do for your pills, but I don't know, I guess it warrants more explanation or exploration.
Bill?
You know, I, I think to that point, it is, if there's a way to separate it, but right now, if we don't do, if we don't make any changes based on tonight's conversation, our ordinance will say that it's a hazardous waste. And so we're either giving direction tonight that, "Go ahead with hazardous waste," or "Come back with something else." So I don't think that there's a, there's a wait-and-see piece. And, so I just caution us, just in general terms, to be, to be open to what that is. I know that not everyone is happy that we are a state now that, that allows recreational marijuana, and there are things that we can do to safeguard our residents, and, but ultimately, if you view it as we do with alcohol, alcohol is just as dangerous to children and pets and everybody else, but we allow you to take a half-empty bottle of Jack and throw it in the garbage, and there's no penalty for that. Or leave it around laying in your house, or dump it in the curb. I mean, sorry Javier, or I don't wherever you are, but I know you don't want that going into the wastewater, but, but you know, I mean, it, the way that we, we should just be careful on how we do it, that's all I'm saying. Perhaps there's a way to talk about proper disposal and not necessarily hazardous waste, and then that satisfies that. And again, back to the delivery, I don't know, Sherri, if you were saying yes or no to that. I don't want to turn off medical marijuana delivery if we enact this by prohibiting it.
I, I agree, I don't think it does, but I, I agree with what you were saying.
Yeah, I don't want to turn it off. Those are, those are my two issues with, with the subject. And again, I really appreciate the dialogue and, and the work that staff has put into it. It's a, it's a situation that we've got to address, it's just, let's do it in a very coherent kind of way.
Wally?
Well, I just Googled hazardous waste for marijuana bill, and it says that some of it could be hazardous waste. And I would rather err on the side of too much to start with till we know more, than say it's not hazardous waste, and then someone starts growing and decides they don't want to grow anymore, and they throw it out. Kids get in trash, they do, dogs get it, it gets in our water, I don't think we want that, but I think we just need to know more about it. I don't think we have to raise a red flag other than we're looking into, because we don't know, I don't know what the other cities are doing. Is everybody else saying it's hazardous waste? I mean, if someone had to have a reason to come up with that hazardous waste problem or concern, it didn't just come out of thin air, so. There's just a lot of chemicals that are used, and they should not go into, into our garbage, and they shouldn't go into our water. So, I just think we need more information.
Joe?
I agree with the delivery on medical marijuana, just like any other delivery, if you go to Walgreens and get your medicine for delivery, that I think you want, want to keep. But I also think, whatever you decide here, whether it's hazardous waste or how you dispose, if you don't have a really intense marketing program and an advertising program on our code, people are just going to dump it out anyway, okay? So whatever you come up with, you better have a really, a robust information packet that gets out there to everybody, because if you don't, they're going to do what's, kind of comes natural to them, they don't want it, they're going to toss it out. So I think that's just as important as deciding the other piece of it.
Well, this is a generation gap right here. If I had my way, we wouldn't have it, okay? So I'm a mother that lived with a son that got involved, and it started with that marijuana, and they went to hash, and they went to other things. So I'm not really behind any of this, I have to tell you. Medical, I can understand that, but the other, yeah, we've got booze, let's put, let's put marijuana with it. Hey, you know, let's have big parties, and we can put everything on the table, and put it in the middle, and everybody will smoke it and chew it and do whatever they want to it. I'm just not for it, so I, I have to tell you, I'm not good on this subject, and I have no intentions of bending on it. So, yeah, I think the council's going to have to really, there's things like where we put it in the trash. I came from Europe, where you had, I mean, where you had to take every cigarette butt and put it, and ashes and everything in one container. You just couldn't throw it in any of the others. So I was under that for a number of years, and so I'm just not, so I'm, I'm here, and I will support on some of them that I think I can, but the whole, the whole picture for me is not something I ever thought I'd have to sit and talk about.
Yes, Bill?
So one of the things that they talk about with hazardous waste is the cultivation, and that's not what I'm talking about. So I think there's an opportunity for us to talk about cultivation waste, which I'm not even sure that our ordinance allow, our other ordinance allows cultivation in the city, within the city, but for those that are cultivating at home, there's cultivation waste, which gets to hydroponics and, and, you know, disposal of plant versus, for lack of a much better phrase, use for home consumption, which is different. The leftover, the whatever, I'm not even sure what's leftover, but?
Sunday meal.
That kind of stuff. Yeah, the, I'm going to go back to the, to my days in the 70s, but the roach and, well, you know, all the rest of that, but, but whatever's left from home consumption is different than cultivation. So if you're looking at revising, I think there's a way to separate those two things, so we're not talking about throwing away hundreds of gallons of stuff used in hydroponic versus, "I had half a cookie, I didn't like it, so I'm throwing my other half a cookie in the garbage. Oh my God, that's hazardous waste, I need to hold on to it until October, or until November, or April, when Hazardous Waste Day is." I, I think there's a difference between those two, and I, I think reasonable people will- will figure that out, if, as long as we don't make it illegal. Like, that's what I'm driving at.
Any other comments? Yes. Brandon?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it's a good idea to look at the language, just to make it as easy as possible for people, because I think people are just in the fault of throwing it all in the way in the trash, so, just to make it as common sense as possible. And I, I've seen people, I've seen, I've seen a kid at Cobblestone roll up on his bike, pull cigarette butts out of the trash, smoke them, and then roll, roll off, so, so yeah, so I know people will grab it, it just depends where it's at. So I think keeping it at the home is, is, is good, and whatever that looks like. So I think at the end of the day, people are default to, they're the easiest thing is for them, and that's probably just throwing it all in the trash, so.
I wonder how many cigarette butts we pick up in the parks, even though they're not supposed to. I'd love to know that, and then how, how we collect those, so, isn't that nice? No, we will have marijuana butts for our kids. What can you ask in life if you don't ask for something like that? So again, I have concerns. Any other discussions? I want to thank you for your presentation, it was clear and concise. And the, I did have one question that I didn't ask, so I, I went back and looked at it today, but what about patios? I couldn't remember if, if a restaurant has a patio, if they can put out on there, no smoking in my patio, I just can't remember, and, or marijuana. So, you know, now, people who smoke go out, go out the patios. So non-smokers don't go to the patio. So now we're going to go to marijuana, and we're going to smoke. And we won't even have to get a beer or a drink, we're right there. So I'm questioning that, okay? And I'm questioning the right of the, the restaurant.
Mayor, a patio would be, and a restaurant would be in a public place, that's a place where people are invited to come in by the business owner, and in a city that would be prohibited.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question. Any other questions? I didn't hear you. Yes, I know. Go ahead.
So we also wanted to update council on potential changes that we needed to make to our HR policy. Prop 207 does allow employers to maintain a drug-free workplace. It does not require employers to accommodate consumption or possession of marijuana at the workplace. We would use this, a good analogy is comparable, comparable to the use of alcohol. Alcohol is legal, alcohol results sometimes in impairment, and, but a person can't be under the influence of marijuana, alcohol at work, and you can't drink at work. So a similar comparison here for marijuana, it's legal, it results in impairment, but you can't be under the influence of marijuana at work or use at work. So when we sat down with HR, we went through, and we made some just general changes specifically related to the definitions, including definitions that weren't included, but also updating definitions, specifically pulling marijuana out of that controlled substances portion of the definition. As far as our recruitment policy and our background checks, HR will continue to do pre-employment drug testing for those safety-sensitive positions. We updated the employee disciplinary guidelines, again, pulling marijuana out of that controlled substances. However, a person is still subject to disciplinary action for any use at work, possession at work, or impairment while on duty. And we also updated our alcohol and controlled substances policy to specifically call out marijuana. As for those safety-sensitive positions, again, we will have pre-employment testing for those safety-sensitive positions. There will also be automatic testing after any type of accident involving a person in a safety-sensitive position. Those are the commercial drivers' license, officers, firefighters, and also those volunteers or employees that work closely with young children. And that's our update.
I, I had a question, so I don't remember. So I thought I read somewhere that hiring in, in, for the public safety, that we wouldn't be looking at past records, or they're going to start that, I was just questioning that, you know. So hard always get police and fire and all that, and some experienced people that might have had an incident that was recorded. Are they becoming lax on that? Is that a part of what this will result in?
Mayor, I think there are two parts to that. There is a portion of Prop 207 which will allow expungement of certain criminal records for those persons beginning July of 2021. If they had a conviction for possession of marijuana in those legally permissible amounts, they can approach the court and have their record expunged. So there is a possibility in the future that if something like that was on someone's record, and we hired them in the future, that it would be off their record by the time
I think that's fair.
I think the other issue is, HR will continue to engage in background checks for their recruitment policy. And I know that the director of HR is here, just in case you had any specific questions for him.
Joe?
Are there any standard measurements for this? Because it's my understanding, as opposed to alcohol. Alcohol you drink, it's out of your system within what, so many hours? Days? But this stuff can stay in their system for months, is that correct?
Yes, up to 30 days, for sure.
Up to 30 days. So how, how do the police, when they are under the influence, whatever, know whether they're under the influence or it's something that was 29 days ago?
Well
Or even hiring you, somebody, if you pick something up for 29 days, does that mean then they would be not eligible for city employees, for city employment?
Mayor and Councilmember Puzillo, yes, if a person is into pre-employment testing, that is one of the concerns with marijuana, is the fact that it can be in your system, and it just depends on the person, how long they've been using. Again, it's not like alcohol, there's no breathalyzer for marijuana where you can actually test. So as far as pre-employees, potentially, yes, for those public safety-sensitive positions, someone could be excluded. As far as current employees who are non-public safety, not only would you have to have specifically, potentially a positive test, but also some discussion and documentation concerning whether or not that person appeared to be under the influence while at work.
Yeah, that's my understanding. It's much more difficult with this substance than it is with alcohol. Okay, thank you.
Sheri?
Yeah, that's kind of where I, that's kind of where I'm going with what Joe was, was going with, with a DUI, it just has to be in your system. You cannot drive a car if this, and this didn't change the DUI law. So if we have people who are operating vehicles or anything that is motorized, technically, and they have smoked within the, you know, last 10 to 14 days, if this is still in their system and not the, you know, metabolite, they're breaking Arizona laws. So how do we do that when we have people out there on heavy equipment? You don't have to be impaired, but you are breaking the law. So then if they're in an accident, are we now liable because now we have somebody, a police officer, I'm just using someone who might get in, someone, or, or, you know, public works gets in an accident, it's not their fault, it now is their fault because they're technically have a DUI?
Well, the law did, Mayor and Councilmember Lortano, the law specifically does talk about impairment under marijuana, and it does include language about being impaired to the slightest degree. So there is language that
I'm talking about the A3, not the A1, the drug one.
The drug one, or you talked about Prop 207?
I'm talking about how the state law interacts. I guess I'm not being very clear, because there's several DUI statutes. The A1 is you can be under, impaired under anything, drugs, alcohol, any combination, doesn't matter the amount. The A3, there's a list of drugs under state statute, which marijuana is one of them. And you can't have marijuana, you can have, you just can't have it in there. It's a, basically an automatic guilty. It's the same penalty as the A1, but the A3 is She knows what, she's looking it up. But basically, there's two statutes. There's, you can drive, you cannot drive while impaired under anything. It could be Nyquil for you, it could be one sip of wine for you, or it could be, you know, a keg for Bill, that doesn't matter. I guess, I usually use the But then we've got the A3, we've got the drug thing that says under it that you can't have marijuana in your system. And if this statute didn't change the traffic code, we have people in public works, or police, or fire, anybody who's operating anything motorized, they get in an accident, it is now their fault, even if they're not impaired. You don't need impairment, just all be there. I, I, what's our liability? I guess that's my issue, is like, I don't, well, this, you know, obviously didn't come through the legislature, so, help me, how do we protect ourselves? Because you cannot be impaired, you can be perfectly fine. You get in an accident, somebody T-bones you, they can be impaired, they test everybody.
Okay, I have a question, because I don't know. So how do they detect the marijuana? I mean, other than your eyes, or?
Blood test. Blood test?
Sorry, what?
Blood test. And they routinely ask, most officers will ask, are you under, have you smoked or drank any substances? It's not a defense to DUI. You can't drive, if you have a medical marijuana card, you can't drive. Yeah, you can't drive. But we're not putting people in city vehicles where we have liability. If you get tested, then we're It is, because it wasn't, it's not consistent, so. Help me, how are we going to work this so we don't get sued?
So
Call it first.
So I think the, the better option to explore that is to put something in, in detail writing to, to council, so we can get it out to you, so you can see it and, and understand it as we move forward with our changes to the, the HR policy updates.
And, and that might be something that's going to have to go to the legislature to fix some sort of liability protection for us, because that's state statute, so.
I think that's a good point you brought up.
Well, that happened with the medical marijuana cards. I had so many people come and say, but I have a card. It's like, I know, it doesn't matter. You can't drive. It's like if you take another medicine, sometimes you can't drive with medicine. So if we're putting people in cars, so thank you, I appreciate that. I don't mean to like blindside you with that, but I'm just like, this, this isn't, you didn't write this, so you're just trying to fix it for us. So I appreciate that.
Yes, Brandon?
I answered a lot of the questions already, thank you for this as well. Did, we don't do random drug testing. Once you're already employee, the only reason you get a drug test is if you, for cause, right? You had an accident, your boss saw you looked impaired, or you're acting with different things like that. I'm used to more, I'm used to nuclear power, where they, they, they test you any day, any day could be your day to get tested for drug use. So I was just curious what that looks like.
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, there is the provision for CDL, people with CDL licenses, that, there are, there's random drug testing for that. The other ones, no, is my understanding, and I'll refer to Lyman if there's any need to, to correct that.
Just for cause, if you had an accident, you might be going and getting your blood drawn, and
Yes.
If they think, if your leader thinks that you were impaired, or someone thinks you're impaired, then?
So generally, for the regular employees, like myself, it would be a situation where if there's an accident, then generally there would have to be some suspicion of impairment. For public safety, it is automatic, if they're in an accident, that they would be tested. And also then you have the CDL license holder, license holders, those persons are subject to random testing, and they also get automatic testing if there's an accident.
Okay, and if I walk into work and I look impaired, then my leader could say, you need to go get tested?
Yes, there would be documentation that this person appeared impaired, and then there would be a drug test.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you. I know that's a big, this employment portion is, the whole state is trying to figure it all out right now. I know it's not just us, but, so I appreciate us trying to figure it out. I'm sure there'll be a lot of lessons learned from every, every type of business out there, so, thank you.
Any other questions? You have any more information for us? You did a great job.
Thank you.
I think it's a difficult subject, and it's very technical, and I think you covered all areas. Thank you so much.
Lisa, did you have more?
Sorry?
Do you have more?
No.
I'm just looking at the rest of the slides.
Those are the same slides, no more.
Okay. All right, the second item is an update on the judicial branch activity for the Goodyear Municipal Court for FY '20, as well as the future court initiatives. The Honorable Myra Galeno, Presiding Judge, will present. Judge?
Good evening, Mayor, esteemed members of council. Happy New Year to all of you. It's my pleasure today to present the Goodyear Municipal Court State of the Union Address for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020. Thank you. To say the least, 2020 has been a year of change, challenges, teamwork, and definitely adaptability. Although 2020 presented us all here in this room with extraordinary circumstances and unanticipated setbacks, we have learned valuable lessons while navigating these pandemic waters since March. The Goodyear Municipal Court has implemented a very broad range of safety measures and protocols throughout this period and ongoing as we continue in this health crisis. We are now poised to pivot at a moment's notice to make the necessary adjustments in response to public, excuse me, constant public changes in policy and recommendations made. Together, our court has worked tirelessly to create a safe environment, a robust and still expanding virtual court that will allow us to meet the demand for our services from our court users. Before I do continue, I do want to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge our court team. I am amazed by everyone in court, especially today. We are down for the count for a number of people, and we have worked so very well collectively. We have dug in our heels throughout, we have remained open, and I want to help, and I want to make sure that they acknowledge them publicly because of the very important work that they do every single day. Ms. Wayland can attest to it, and I thank her personally for her commitment and resolve during these trying times. This is what actually makes me feel very optimistic about the future, the team that we have, the commitment and the resolve going forward. To kind of illustrate a bit of the impact that the court has suffered as a result of the pandemic. And here are some slides that we're taking a look at here regarding some of the adaptations we, we made when we first started. We elaborated signs addressing the public regarding how they could gain ingress into the court. We, as you can see, socially distanced the six feet, if not more. In the corner over there, we have electrostatic cleaning that we engaged twice monthly at the beginning of, of this pandemic. And we'll see here in this colorful graph, the impact on the court's filings. 2019, we can see 12,187 total filings, 2020, 8,009, 10. We reduced in actually all of these fields, but we did see a slight uptick in domestic violence, criminal filings, as well as protective orders and injunctions against harassment. That is reflective of the situation we've all been living through throughout this pandemic. We are told to pretty much stay in place, and frustrations can flare and emotions run high. So there we could see an uptick this year. Definitely for COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly impacted you, and I'll walk you a little bit through the number of improvements we've implemented as a result of this challenging year. We reinvented ourselves, we reinvented how we do business, how we conduct our operations. We did so quickly, we transitioned to safeguard the health of every single person working at the court, as well as those coming into our court for our services. We quickly built the physical barriers, you see these are actually movable, we had some built here. With our CIP project, those had to be taken down. Again, the social distancing that you saw throughout those photographs. We actually also came up with plans to make sure that our foot traffic came in seamlessly, traveled throughout our courthouse, into our courtrooms, out, back to transaction windows, and then all the way out to our courthouse, so that we would avoid having all these people congregate at the same time because of the mandated restrictions regarding the amount regarding the amount of people that could be in one courtroom in one setting. We had to be very creative with our docketting, we had to reduce our dockets significantly. When we were only allowed 10 people in one room at one time, we worked diligently with the city prosecutor's office so that we could together implement changes regarding our dockets, because they are affected with everything we do. Law enforcement also is affected with what we do, and in turn, we're affected with what they do. So we all collaborated, we had weekly meetings, if I remember correctly, regarding how we're attacking things, how we're resolving issues. And, and it truly shined when we began implementing all of these changes. We had to, of course, um, gather together not only our leadership team, but our staff. We had daily debriefs after every single day, how did this work? Did the flow work well for you? We had everyone from Joel, our security guard, all the way up to me, all socially distanced in this room, discussing what worked, what didn't, what could be tweaked, polished, and perfected. We, in essence, became, uh, permanently in the creative adaptive mode, constantly looking for new ways to change our operations so that we could continue providing these essential court services to the, uh, city's residents and all of those that have business here in the court. We designed a virtual courtroom, and we work again with prosecutor's office to resolve cases during this period. We purchased four iPads. We started using Microsoft Teams, Zoom, DocuSign, and Skype. We additionally began with our ODR process, which is the Online Dispute Resolution process. We crafted, um, in case of an emergency and mass infection, we partnered with the Buckeye Municipal Court for an emergency shut, shutdown should there be mass widespread infection of COVID-19. We have worked diligently to make sure that we can continue providing these court services to, uh, our constituents here for the city of Goodyear, to make sure that we're reminded of the important work we do every single day. The issues that COVID has presented us with, not only reinventing ourselves as a court and continuing the delivery of these core services, we've had staffing shortages. Uh, the pandemic places a great strain on our court operations, and when staffing levels are affected with, uh, positive results, or when we have to care for school-aged children and schools are shut down because of the pandemic, that exacerbates the problem in reference to our staffing, uh, impact. The few non-eligible employees have more to work on, and it does become taxing, and it does become frustrating. The, 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 the leave that is, of course, approved and taken does handicap the court's ability to have our full team, all hands on deck, working for the court at full speed. Notwithstanding, we have done a remarkable job every single day to make sure that we do not have any backlogs going into 2021. Now, in order to solve a bit this staffing crisis we're having, is, in essence, it's technological in nature. We would very much like the support from mayor and council in our endeavor to become a more digital court. What we would, we'll focus on is the ability to provide a bit of remote telework options for our staff. The premise here is to be able to train our staff completely, and that has been the number one challenge. Because we do have a situation where we may have a staffer that's out Monday through Wednesday, another Tuesday, Friday, one on Wednesday. So to have a full team together at the same time, to be able to train on those, uh, tasks that they could do remotely has proven to be difficult, not impossible, but difficult. In fact, today, we were out our case, our customer service division, the entire division. So we had one supervisor manning our, uh, transaction window, we had a busy calendar, but we all pitched in. But it is necessary to validate the concerns and the burden that this places on those ineligible employees for that leave. So our proposed solution would be to have the support from mayor and council for the purchase of four laptop computers that would allow us to swap our PCs out so that we could then have that ability and that flexibility of telecommuting once everyone is properly trained. Additionally, the goal is to eventually become a paperless court. Uh, this has been a paper court for, forever in essence, and to transition, what we would propose as well would be the purchase of scanners, scanners for all of our court employees to have at their workstations. That would be a purchase of 14 scanners. Now, because the city of Goodyear does not have its own separate IT department, city of, uh, Goodyear means court, doesn't have its own IT department, we don't have an, uh, MIS professionals working just for the court. We are reliant on the AOC network, the Administrative Office of the Court networks. There are some larger courts that have the resources, for example, the city of Mesa, city of Scottsdale, that do have this ability to have in-house tech support because they have their own case management system. We do not. We, like many other courts, rely on the AOC, and the AOC, in essence, charge us fees for the use of equipment that we lease from them. So the support, of course, the court would require, if the, the city mayor and council would be generous to approve, would be the financial backing for us to start migrating towards this digital process. We're, we're beginning to, to definitely, not only explore, but beginning to actually do ourselves in court. One major accomplishment that we did have, and this is some of the adaptability that you're taking a look at here right now. That's me and Manny in our, uh, break room, conference room, executive session room. We, we did our court there, it was us, our laptops, and go. Uh, we, we, I've done injunction of harassment hearings in the closet, I don't have an issue with that because we need to make sure that we do our jobs and we provide these core services to the community. You all can see the frosted panels up there, that's one of the new changes in the court because the area that we are in, we cannot socially distance six feet apart. So we were able to install these partitions, and they're dual purpose. One, it provides for the safety and health of everyone in the pandemic, and also it allows for a bit of privacy so that people can focus on their work in their workstation. One of the massive, um, projects that we accomplished this year was the Capital Improvement Security Project. This is, as a result of a project that is mandated by the Arizona Supreme Court Safety and Security Administrative Order 2017-15. And some of the improvements that were accomplished this, this specific year was we have now, and you can all experience it, gated restricted parking for court staff and for you. We have a prisoner Sally Port now, and then there's access from that Sally Port into the cells for the court. We now have cell seating that is bolted to the cell floors, which we did not have before. We have at the very back of the courtroom here, that steel and glass enclosure for the in custody defendants. We also remodeled the benches in courtroom here, number one, and courtroom number two with ballistic proof materials. The woodwork, which we can see all here, which is removable for purposes of our multi-use facility, was designed and created so that we could have the mandated separation between the bench and the public. We also have our video security cameras outside and inside of the courtroom to monitor any type of activity. As we all know, courtroom shootings are unfortunately common nowadays, and so it's very important to be able to have eyes everywhere for everyone's safety and security. We also created a new security office as you come in, if you come in through the front door, you could see. At the entrance of the courthouse, we purchased an X-ray scanner so that we can make sure that we detect any parcels coming in, if there's any kind of weapons, and there have been a number of items that have been confiscated. We have remodeled the court transaction counter with that beautiful glass window. It is bulletproof glass that was installed there. We also have keyless access for doors for authorized personnel only, security film on all court windows, concrete bollards in the front of the courthouse, just in case the vehicle is driven in here and used as a weapon. We have window shades on all of the lobby windows for reduction of visibility into the facility. And we also have the seating that's outside, it's now actually affixed to the floor, and it's not movable, the movable chairs we used to have. So all of these adjustments were made, thank goodness to your support, in the Capital Improvement Project, and they were finalized this year. And the COVID partitions which were shown there, we also added an eight-foot wall privacy wall and door, which separates the, and you can take a look at that right there in the first photograph over to your left, if you're looking from my angle. It provides the security from a person that's coming into the court, to not see everyone in the, in the general work area to determine how many people there are, just in case the intent is not benign to come into court. And it serves as a sound buffer as well, because conversations do take place between that glass window and patrons that are walking in, as well as phone calls from the general work area and conversations possibly with supervisors or myself and, and some of the staffers. Uh, we also have there, I don't know if you included a photograph of our rolling filing system. The old one is, one, is one that's positioned in the center of our general work area, where we literally have to sit on the floor or hunch on down to take a look and retrieve for our files. We now have standing shelves that are on these tracks that roll with ease, where we can easily access all of our case files. Now, some of the innovations that we, that we implemented throughout this year were our telephonic and video plea by mail procedures. To provide defendants that are affected by COVID, or defendants that live a significant distance from the courthouse, with an opportunity to efficiently and equitably resolve their cases without the inconvenience of having to come to court, we developed a robust telephonic video plea by mail program. So after the arraignment is conducted, and a pre-trial conference is held between the state and a defendant or the defense attorney, and then an agreement is had, the agreement is then provided to the court in writing. The court in turn sends a plea by mail packet with all the corresponding documents that have to be signed and filled out by the defendant or defense counsel and their client. They in turn return it to our court, and then we go ahead and have a hearing, whether it be virtual or telephonic, on the record to sentence that person. Just recently about, how long ago maybe, two weeks? No, four, for DocuSign? Two, three weeks, we started using DocuSign. It has really revolutionized the speed at which we are able to convey those documents, get those back and return and process them. We have seen an uptick in the filings, there's nowhere near the rate that we were at before. We did suffer a 63% reduction in our filings. We are up a touch, but nowhere near pre-pandemic levels. We have seen a rush of new citations coming in, but we also see a rush of new infections because of COVID. So that kind of levels are playing field out a bit again. We are also very excited because we're the, the Goodyear Municipal Court will be the first court to pilot ODR, which is Online Dispute Resolution for Criminal Cases. Scottsdale Municipal Court has been doing it for civil traffic, but we worked collectively and collaboratively with the Arizona, uh, Office of the Courts to develop this program and piloted for limited jurisdiction courts for criminal cases. So we are now, um, piloting two case types to go through the process, which are criminal or excessive speed, and also for driving on a suspended, canceled, or revoked license. It is, in essence, the same thing as if the person would come into court to resolve their matter, but they do it on this virtual platform. And we have, work collaboratively with the state as well, because they also have their input that they are part of this whole process. At any point in time, they can decide to come in and speak to a judge, that is always an alternative. But many a time, we do see that now people expect, because of the pandemic and how it's kind of pushed us all into new areas of how we serve our constituents and our community, it has allowed us to, uh, have that access to justice at a touch of a screen or a click of a button, which is what everyone is demanding nowadays. We get the messages from our dentists, from our doctors, and from our courts now. So, so we're, we're coming full circle regarding that, and we're very proud of the advancements we've made with ODR, and we're very excited because of DocuSign as well. We are also very satisfied with the transition based on your authorization for the, uh, the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Goodyear and the city of Guadalupe as a result of the Administrative Order 2019-109, where Chief Justice, uh, Chief, the Supreme Court, excuse me, authorized, uh, Chief Judge Walty from the Arizona Supreme Court to take over the administrative functions of the Guadalupe Court as a result of their impending closure. And after we presented you, to you here, we are now handling all of the post-adjudicated cases from that course since its closure on the 31st of August. And I'm happy to report that is going very well. Now, in, in reference to this specific slide here that we have, we're very excited, we've introduced, uh, new team members. We are very thrilled because they're an energetic group, they do display our city core values, our judicial canons, and we emphasize the need to encourage and promote a collaborative work environment. Staff recognition is important, it's critical in, in our development as an organization. We have developed ways to recognize and celebrate our court staff, and all of their achievements. And there's a specific program that we have that we started before the muggings for the city began, which are very popular in our court. It's the Your Honored Awards. This program specifically allows for the mutual recognition of each other's hard work and how it impacts each other. So if we observe that, we go ahead and say, I'm, I'm, I'm nominating you for a Your Honor Award because I saw you pitching in with Crystal while she was clerking with the judge in court. For example, last Tuesday, we had a monstrous calendar, tomorrow we have its father. So it'll be nice tomorrow. And, and we all pitched in, and you could see how everyone just felt buoyant because they were, you know, everyone was really engaged in the process, we, we, we did everything, we processed well over 40 cases, and we did it before 11:30, which is amazing. Everyone from our security guard, Joel, all the way to me, we all work collaboratively, so we're all getting a Your Honor Award on that one. And today, because we were short a division staff, I may get a point to personally make sure that I acknowledge everyone here in court. We got the largest pizza you could ever buy, it said, Rudy's or Joe's? Gus's Pizza. 32 inches, not kidding you, it's the largest pizza, we have to kind of swivel it to make it go through the doors. And I think we have, Pete's holding that one. So we had some pizza, we had some Caesar salad, because when it's the few, the brave, and the proud that are here, I need to make absolutely sure that we're, we're all in it together, and we all do the very best that we can. Personally, I have either had lunch or coffee with every single staff member of my court since my appointment. This year, it's been, I've been precluded from doing so because of COVID-19, but I always find innovative ways to acknowledge my team because I'm as strong as they are. And today was pizza, handmade flour tortillas are a routine, and you'll see me taking walks with a number of my staffers to determine why they love being in court, what they really don't like, what they think we could improve upon, because that's the type of communication that I think is so important and genuine for us to foster a good working environment. Now, we are committed to promoting and maintaining an environment where a high-performing workforce can thrive, and to assist staff in remaining passionate about what we do. We, um, make sure that we want to influence the, the, the positive nature of our work environment by receiving ideas from them regarding what could be improved on and how we can make things better. In order to foster this productive work environment, I meet with my court administrator every single day to make sure that we discuss the most pressing issues of the day. We schedule time every week, one hour a week, to discuss the highs of the week, the lows of the week. And then we meet once a month, and that's the court leadership team, which is comprised of my court administrator, Ms. Wayland, our two division supervisor, Ms. Edwards, and Mr. Sarzosa, as well as myself. During those meetings, we have earnest discussions regarding the court's concerns, new developments, changes coming along the pipeline, and any other concerns that can arise. We, um, make an effort to collectively discuss the concerns and how to resolve them. In fact, we are currently, uh, reading and using these two books as tools. One you may be very familiar with, um, which is The Five Appreciation Languages in the Work Course, in the Workplace by Gary Chapman, it's a wonderful read. And then a good friend recommended Start With Why by Simon Sinek, that was Mr. Stipp over there. It's an amazing read regarding. It's an amazing read regarding not so much, why do you do what you do? I'm sorry, what do you do? And let me go in there and get some, but why are you doing what you do? What is the purpose of your organization? Which centers that. And we're using both of these tools so that we can impact, and impact and influence our work environment to make it very productive. We also dedicate a lot of time to staff development. We facilitate very engaging discussions. We promote self-engagement through a number of activities, such as our COJA training. We do a lot of in-house training where we make presentations. We actually share funny videos and do animated exercises that allow us to laugh, blow off a little steam, but learn at the same time. We also maintain appropriate funding to support staff in their professional education. For example, there are a number of programs. I went through one, and that's when I originally met Ms. Waylon. I went through the Arizona Supreme Court Court Executive Program. It's eighteen months long. It's a time commitment, but it truly opens your eyes to the judicial field, the careers that are available. And there are tests, there are field trips, there are engaged discussions. And truly, an eye-opening experience, I think, for what you could do with your career in the judicial field. They also offer a court manager program and a court supervisor program. Currently, our customer service supervisor has started with his manager eighteen-month program. And two of our team members, one in customer service and one in case processing, will be beginning the supervisor one as well. So these are novel programs offered by the Supreme Court. And now courts are actually requiring, as one of the qualifications, along with your education and experience, are you certified in any of these programs? Because it truly does bring you down to earth regarding the daily needs and operations of a court at a supervisor, executive, and a managerial level. Now, looking forward, in spite, we are amazed. We were just discussing about this the other day, that in spite of the pandemic, we have been able to do so very much with so very much pressure and so very little available for us to do. And if we can take this 2020 beast of a year on and come out on top, we can take on 2020 smiling. We are currently the thirteenth busiest court in Arizona. We will be moving up in rankings as we continue to grow. And the relation, and of course, the development of the city and the population of the city, as well as its economic development, will also increase our growth here at the city court. I've identified a number of goals for the next year that we will be focusing on. One of them is, again, as I discussed before, beginning converting the case processing division into a paperless process. The purchase and installation of those desktop computers, those scanners, will allow team members, if we do so by October of 2021, we can develop a paperless policy and procedure on which we will begin training our staff in both our customer service division and in our case processing division by December of 2021. Hopefully, training will conclude by February of 2022. And we will be able to measure this success by displaying a reduction in case processing from about fourteen days to the desired four days in time. And of course, we find this goal to be very relevant because it centers on our vision, which is to deliver fair, efficient, and timely justice to everyone and every day. Additionally, the other goal that I've identified is to prevent any case processing backlog as a result of COVID-19 due to CDC health restrictions and guidelines. We're developing a pandemic case processing training plan for division staff. And we're adding an additional docket per week. This, we're hoping to achieve by July of 2021. And that way, we can run two courts simultaneously. And we will be able to measure the success of this goal through our time standards result. Anything that's out of time standard has proven to be ineffective. Anything in has proven success. And again, this is aligned with our vision to deliver fair, efficient, and timely justice to everyone, every day. So I am very excited about 2021. I am amazed by what our team has done in 2020. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Questions? I think you gave a very thorough presentation. There's not one question here. Oh, Joe, I'm sorry, didn't see your end up.
Just a down comment. I appreciate because of some of the challenges that been when you first came here as far as staff turnover to put a lot of emphasis on growing your staff, creating environment. I read your self-review and the things that you're doing. And you've covered quite a bit of it in here. And I'm a firm believer and manageable back me on this one is you're only as good as the people that work for you. You're only as good as the weakest link. And happy people are productive people. So it's important to keep working towards ensuring that the environment is such that creates growth for your employees and also environment that makes them productive because they're happy people. Okay? So I appreciate you covering that in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry?
I want to appreciate you, your whole staff, Crystal, all you guys' hard work because this is an essential function. You can't totally stop it. But it's tough right now because it is tough when you have employees who have young kids and they're at home, and then you're trying to work it. So I appreciate what Joe said about the different avenues that you're trying to do, trying to use technology. That one court program, I'm being trained on in Emporia right now. And it's, they're using Goodyear as examples of how it works. And it will make it so much easier, less people in court. Because I think this might be with us for a while. So I appreciate you guys looking at new ways to do things of the courts I deal with. You guys were up and running more so than many other courts in the state. So I appreciate that you're open for our citizens and with the domestic violence to have those people, the ability to come in and get those orders for being here. And I know it's tough. And thank your staff and thank you guys. And like what Joe said, I think, keep up the good work on trying to keep everyone's morale up because it is tough right now. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura?
Well, I know we recently went through the budget process and these items that had come up today weren't included in it. And I don't know at what point we would address the technology needs to provide for what you need because of COVID and the shifts and changes, if that's a part of this discussion or if that's another venue. But I would be in support of providing you with the technology that you need that you can continue to provide the services. And certainly, the pivot in looking forward towards that paperless. I mean, scanners are, I think we use them in so many other areas that it's like you're a little late to the game on that one, but at least you're getting in the game. So I hope that that's something that we can work on.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Yes. Molly?
Well, I want to thank you for the security updates and the way the professional look that we now have, or we're getting more of it. And it's, the lobby is lovely. And it really makes you know that you're in a municipal court setting, whereas before it wasn't. And I think what you're doing is innovative and we appreciate you doing it. And I'm very happy to know that you're able to start some new programs with your staff. And I love seeing all your positive notes and signs on the walls and how you're reinforcing what you want them to do and to be and to feel, and to feel appreciated here. So thank you very much. And thank you, Crystal, for everything you're doing and for helping me get in the gate tonight.
Thank you very much. The other?
I'll just finally say thank you for all you've done and the direction you've been working on. And I think one of the things is happy employees, as Joe said. And that's always a challenge, especially during this particular time. So we appreciate what you've done so far. Any other comments? All right, I think that we're finished with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, you won't be getting, have a chance to ask needs from the city manager the next meeting. So do you have anything you want to add tonight before we go on to the next meeting? No? Okay, the city manager, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, mayor. Just one item, which is that city offices will be closed on Monday, January 18th in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Emergency fire, police, and sanitation services will operate as normal. And city offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January 19th. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're scheduled to go in a special meeting. I need to ask you, would you like a little break?
Yes, please.
Okay. And so we're going to have to give staff some time too. So with a no further business, this meeting is adjourned.